The record will be made in the state of those counties. County will be nine hundred and thirty seven to five. All votes please stand down. We may have had a few implications which we didn't give them. Please give back our comments, any of our.
Let's just define what we want. The next thing is for one nation. The division of the law, the potential of justice.
Friends, I'm sorry. Give grace to God. Thank you more than other things. And serve you. You think you think the out there is going to do to be consistent with your rights and obligations, our sources. Please give us your grace, your good air, and give us your wisdom, and you will love your God. When Jesus says pray.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Next on the agenda, our first case, case of the season. Nolan.
President. I think the most important, we agree on the only thing that we're talking about is more than John Barry. And also two is more than I call it, or Mark Vonski.
Thank you, Nolan. Are there any nominations? Five? Harry, Harry, nomination. Close, close, second, second. All in favor, ever? All in. Vote, vote. The I have it. Raphael, more than John, John. Ready, ready. I reappointed to the earlier question board, and Mark Root is being appointed to make the policy, policy. Now I have a motion to approve the minutes, the minutes of April eleven, twenty seventeen meeting. For a second, for a second. All in favor? All in favor. Vote, vote. The I's have it. For the April eleven, for eleven, twenty seventeen meeting. Approved, approved. Report from the county auditor. Report, report. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Report on the county commissioners. A report, a report. Report from any council, special committee.
Morton.
Mr. Tanzer.
Just might remind our audience, I know, and you even, you even meeting that today is, today is last day, last day, the only day, the only day of local and several, several county organizations on that list, when it comes to Miami, Park Hammer, Park Department. I did see, I did see there's already been, there's already been five, many west county, west county, there is a, 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 that last, that last, that last, I don't know, I don't know that people that are, people that are avid park walkers, bicyclists, just, just south, south, just to support, probably has the means to do so, to, to, my, 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 should get local, they, they, up to, up to, up to my county.
Thank you, Dan Wright. Next on the agenda, first reading. Clerk, will you please read, 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 number seventeen.
Four, three, one, two, discussion, discussion, by, 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 by,[317.12][317.12][S07 34, the San Jacinto County Code of Ordinance, to establish a non-impervent county coroner fund, and establishing a fee for county coroner services provided to non-county users of the San Jacinto County Coroner Services Petitioners, San Jacinto County Coroner.
Bill number thirty-seven seventeen is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee.
Bill thirty-eight seventeen arranges amending a supplementary title of fifteen land usage chapter one fifty-four planning of zoning in the San Jacinto County Code as a medical property located five-one-nine-zero-mateville Road South Bend in our single-family district two, our two residential district petitioner, Holy Trinity Evangelical Lutheran Church.
Bill number thirty-eight seventeen is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill thirty-nine seventeen ordinance of the San Jacinto County Council amendment title fifteen chapter one fifty-four land usage of the San Jacinto County Code by amendment section one-five-four dot sixty-six definitions by amendment of definition of penalty petitioner to San Jacinto County Council.
Bill number thirty-nine dash seventeen is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Bill forty dash seventeen ordinance of the San Jacinto County Council amendment title fifteen chapter one fifty-four land usage of the San Jacinto County Code by amendment section one fifty-four dot one oh six C two A to amend development standards for the keeping of horses, other livestock, and poultry in our single-family district petitioner San Jacinto County Council.
Bill number forty seventeen is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda, salary amendments. We have one, bill number thirty-four seventeen, clerk, will you please read the bill?
An ordinance amending ordinance fifty-four dash sixteen, the same being orders establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of the San Jacinto County, San Jacinto County for the twenty-seventeenth, Department eighteen prosecutor.
Mr. McHale, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, this comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Prosecutor.
Thank you. Ken Cotter, San Jacinto County Prosecutor's Office, tenth floor, County City Building. This is an inline transfer. It originally didn't start that way. I was asking for an increase. However, when this was brought to the committee's attention, one of the first things that was asked, is there a way to be able to find those funds without increasing the budget? Originally, I didn't think we did have those funds, and so the committee asked us to take a look at it. Bob Rising Hoover did so, and we were able to find funds from the paralegal line, the investigator's line, the secretary's line. This is an increase for an employee that we did not anticipate. We've had a pretty high incidence of homicides as well as fatal crashes where homicide unit and the fact team are called out. When that occurs, because of the interest in the general public, we've had an inordinate amount of interaction between our office and those media organizations. She works about four to five hours an incident in that, in ensuring that the information is properly passed on to the general public so that people are kept not only informed but also safe. This was, again, unanticipated. Based upon that and just doing the numbers, it comes out to around $5,000 a year if this remains consistent. I was therefore, I am therefore asking for the inline transfer from those three slots, the paralegals, investigator, and secretary, to the administrative assistants so that she can be compensated for the work that she's doing. I would note that if we don't have her do that, that's going to mean that the folks who are trying to solve these crimes would not be able to be working on them, but instead would be responding to the media and letting the general public know what in fact had occurred. This way it allows someone who doesn't have to worry about investigating, do those responses.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Cotter?
Mr. Ruth.
Mr. Root.
Your plan for funding this, is this a one-year fix, or is your plan sustainable over the next several years?
Well, certainly I would have to incorporate that into my next budget. So, right now, it would be sustained. So, every year, it, that increase would have occurred. You've given me a range, so if we find out in fact that she's not having to do those extra hours, then I can make that a judgment, or adjustment in working with the auditor.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council, or the prosecutor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel.
We will now open a public hearing on bill thirty-four seventeen. Does anyone wish to address the council in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill thirty-four seventeen. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill thirty-four seventeen was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on thirty-four seventeen, Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to express my gratitude to the prosecutor for making the effort to look to see if money could be moved around rather than needing an additional appropriation for, thank you, Mr. Cotter.
Any other comments from council on thirty-four seventeen? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Hess?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Tanzer?
Yes.
Mr. Cahill?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Let the record show that bill number thirty-four seventeen is passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our April twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed for the evening. Clerk, will you please read bill number thirty-five seventeen?
An ordinance incorporating transferring monies for the purpose here in specimen for the several departments here in this, in San Jacinto County.
May I have a motion on bill thirty-five seventeen?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill thirty-five seventeen was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on thirty-five seventeen? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll? Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
No, except yes on A, B, C, D, E, F, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, as in O'Brien.
Where are you voting on? On G. Got it. Thank you. Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes, except for G.
Mr. Tanzer?
Yes.
Mr. Cahill?
Aye.
Mr. Root?
No, except for, well, yes, on A through F, and H through O as in O'Brien.
So, this is, you're voting no for G. Yes? Correct? Correct. Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero with the exception of G, the duly noted, no votes by true. Let the record show that bill number thirty-five seventeen was passed by a vote of nine to zero with the exception of item G, which actually passed six for three, but overall thirty-five seventeen would pass nine to zero. Thank you very much. Clerk, will you please read the next?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, I think, against two, three, four, five issues after, what, here's my motion, this is here, twenty-three seventeen and thirty-two seventeen ahead of thirty-two seventeen, which I believe will be some of the discussion about whether the expedite.
Can I attend to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The I's have it. With that motion, we will go to bill number twenty-three seventeen. Mr. Nolan, can you make a report, please, sir?
Mr. President, bill number twenty-three seventeen has come to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bulow?
Good evening, Chuck Bulow, building commissioner with offices at one-twenty-five South Lafayette, South Bend. At the April fifth meeting of the area board of zoning appeals, a petition was heard for a special use to allow adult care facility in a residential district. This was heard and is being sent to the council with a favorable recommendation, subject to a written commitment that a commercial septic approval be obtained from the Indiana State Department of Health.
Any questions from council, or Mr. Bulow? Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, you have five minutes to address the council.
Okay. I am Brock Burnick, certified student legal intern, Notre Dame Clinical Law Center, seven twenty-five hours street in South Bend. I represent Shell Bark Assisted Living, who filed for special use at the April fifth meeting. The, the purpose is to use the house located at five-two-nine-three-three Shell Bark Avenue as an adult care facility for, for four or five adult residents. The location is single-family zoning. So, yeah, like I said, four or five adult long-term residents, they're not, they're not daycare, they're, they're going to be there long-term. Traffic will be minimal. The, any, any other community, or any other potential issues with the health and welfare of the area are, are minimal. So, I'm open to any questions.
Any questions from council for Fisher? Mr. Tanzer?
We've been a few of these over the years, just curious, this is protected by the play fire territory. Does the fire department get notified that this uses being known as residence once, or if this is approved?
I'm, I'm not certain.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea, just to let them know if it gets approved.
For sure.
Fire marshal in play, his name is David Sharon, but they probably would want to know this to mark it in the computer system so they know that those people need special needs of, you know, living as residents.
Excellent suggestion.
And if not, they won't talk to them anymore. It'd be easier. They can know the time. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. Were there any remonstrators?
There, there weren't.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council at this time? Thank you. We'll now open a public hearing on bill twenty-three seventeen. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion number twenty-three seventeen?
Move for passing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number twenty-three seventeen was made by Councilman O'Brien. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further council discussion on this bill? Mr. Nolan?
I'd like to, I assume, you mean that that's, you, the, 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 the,
...the process for a tax phase in for All Our Associates. We started this process back on March 6th when they filed a tax phase in request for property that they own at thirteen seven ninety East Jefferson Boulevard. They're seeking to do two expansions onto their existing building. As we have reviewed their application, they would be eligible for a six-year real property tax phase in for their proposed facility expansion. They're seeking to do about two and a half million dollars of improvements to the facility. They presently have eighty-five employees, and they would seek to add an additional five employees as part of this project. As part of the project, or as part of the proposal, one of the things that if you chose to approve this tax abatement, you'll also need to approve the phase in schedule. So we... This phase in schedule is the same phase in schedule we've had at the previous meetings, but it would be for a six-year abatement, and the schedule at the bottom of the page shows what that phase in looks like. So we need your approval of the phase in as part of the approval. There are representatives here from the company if there's any questions, but it's the same project that we've talked about now on four separate occasions. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from council, for Mr. Shalio?
It's actually thirty-three, Mr. Morton, just for confirmation.
Thirty-three?
Thirty-three dash seventeen should be the correct number.
Okay. Any questions from council on bill number thirty-three dash seventeen? Questions for Mr. Shalio and/or addition? Mr. O'Brien?
I don't remember approving specific phase in schedules for the abatement. Is there something different about this?
No, we just, as part of the paperwork that goes on with this, we have to have an official phase in schedule. State law allows for you to create your own phase in schedule. We're just using the standard one, so we just want this to be included with the paperwork that gets processed on.
You have questions from council on thirty-three seventeen? Here in our open public hearing on the bill, does anyone wish to speak in favor of thirty-three seventeen? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in that position of the bill? Here in our closing public hearing, on thirty-three seventeen, fair motion? For your second?
Second.
Motion to pass, bill number thirty-three seventeen was made by Councilman Nolan, and was seconded by Councilman Kandrick. Any further counsel discussion on this bill?
Just correct it, I love a U-D-MO program.
Here in our closing public hearing, on thirty-three seventeen, fair motion? Ruth?
Yes.
Kandrick?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Shinsky?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
O'Brien? No. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to two. Let the record show that bill number thirty-two seventeen was passed by a vote of seven to two. Court, will you please read bill number thirty-two seventeen? The ordinance for the San Joseph County Council, merely supplementing revising chapter ninety, the San Joseph County Council, commonly known as the Animal Control Ordinance. Mr. McHale, can I be forthwith, sir?
Mr. President, this comes to call counsel with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Speaker?
I am Jenny Carlson with the Humane Society of San Jo County, two-five-zero-six Grape Road, Mishawaka, Indiana. President Morton and council members, I would like to present information on chapter ninety, the revisions that were made. The San Joseph County Animal Control Ordinance was last updated in April of two thousand and seventeen, or two thousand and seven, I'm sorry, a decade ago. Ordinants are living documents which require continuous updating and tweaking to fit the needs of our community. The major changes you will see have been carefully thought out and thoroughly debated from several different members of our community that are animal lovers, animal advocates. There have been many strides in animal welfare, not just in our own community, but in our nation, and we want to make sure that we're meeting those welfare standards and our industry standards. And the updates to this ordinance hopefully will hit the mark. The revisions presented today were agreed upon by local animal advocates, animal welfare organization representatives, government officials, and community members who attended several working group meetings aimed at updating the ordinance over almost a year's worth of time. As any ordinance goes, and as I'm sure all of you know and everybody in the room, there will always be room for improvement, but thankfully it's a living document, so we can go back to it when we find those. So for this update, the things that you will see that have been updated are definitions and language that meet and exceed our industry standards, and to mirror the South Bend Animal Control Ordinance that was last updated in two thousand and fourteen, which will also help our residents who move from the city areas into the county, or from the county to city, to understand what the rules are for animals in our community. And if they're very similar, if not completely the same, it'll be easier for them to follow the rules and to care for their pets. We are also looking to strengthening the animal care, general care requirements, which include language protecting pets and hazardous weather conditions, including when it's below zero, or when it's over, when we have heat advisory, those kinds of things. We don't want animals left out in that heat without proper protection. And also stricter requirements for pets being tethered outside, so that they don't become a nuisance, and they don't become dangerous, and they don't bite, out of being unsocialized. The revisions will help clarify procedures for reporting found animals in a way that will help encourage the safe return to pets to their rightful owners. This has also been a hot topic that we discussed a lot, and we came to an agreement with members of the South Bend Lost and Found Groups and other animal welfare organizations on the language in this section to make it easy for our community to report these pets, and also to give them an opportunity to try to reunite those pets with their owners without bringing them to the shelter, but also letting the shelter know that they have these animals so we can do rabies control and also try to reconnect those pets to their owners if they're coming to the shelter to look for them. We are also working in tandem with the Animal Plan Commission to eliminate the four-pet limit rule for county residents having dogs and cats, which is currently set at ten acres to have over four dogs or cats. And also working on the acreage and zoning rules for chickens, beekeeping, and livestock on properties less than five acres, with restrictions. As any part of this ordinance goes, owners of their pets will have to abide by general care requirements, which include not allowing their animals to become a public nuisance, to start smelling because they're not cleaning up the mess that their animals are making, to dispose of the waste properly, and also to make sure those animals are being confined in a safe and healthy manner on their own property and not running loose or harming others in their community. An attempt to sterilize and reduce the population of free-roaming cats and feral cats, the proposed ordinance will allow for trap neuter return programs for free-roaming feral cats in the county, which will help us reduce our rates of euthanasia for those type of cats, because there won't be as many. Revising permits to fit industry and animal welfare standards are also an item that we have changed. And one of the other items that we have put in the ordinance is to stipulate that pet shops located in unincorporated county limits cannot sell, trade, barter, and/or receive renumeration for dogs and/or cats. Pet shops will be allowed to place dogs and/or cats for adoption through an animal control agency or an animal welfare organization. There are currently no pet shops in the county that are selling dogs or cats in unincorporated areas, so this will have no effect on the current business practices of our county pet stores, which include, like Petco, they're in our county limits. They sell guinea pigs, fish, those kinds of things, but they place dogs and cats and rabbits up for adoption, they don't sell them. There are over one hundred and seventy-five other jurisdictions throughout our country that already have language in their ordinances and their laws about pet shops not selling dogs, potentially to help keep puppy mills from selling dogs in our community. We also have updated the fees, the permit fees, to mirror the South Bend Animal Control Ordinance. We've also updated the pet licensing fees for unaltered animals, to raise the license fee for unaltered animals, to encourage spay-neuter, because the license fee for altered spayed and neutered animals is a lot cheaper, as cheap as five dollars a year if they're microchipped and spayed or neutered. So what is important to remember for all areas of the ordinance is that pet owners and those caring for the pets will still be held to the general care requirements. They cannot allow animals to become a public nuisance, they must keep their animals in a clean and healthy fashion. In case the residents don't follow our ordinance requirements, our animal control officers from the Humane Society will try to mediate the issue, to try to fix the issue. If a solution cannot be made, then we'll take further legal action per what is stated in our Animal Control Ordinance. The proposed updates have been made in the best interest of setting forth comprehensive public safety regulations, which, when effectively implemented, administered, enforced, they will promote responsible pet ownership. And they're aimed at ensuring due process of protections for owners and promoting responsible pet ownership, which is essential to the protection of pets and our residents in San Joseph County. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Mr. O'Brien?
So the ordinance of the bill that we're looking at, voting on, does that permit subdivisions or homeowners' associations to further restrict, for instance, I don't want my next-door neighbor having chickens in his backyard, I live in subdivision.
Absolutely. So if, for instance, if the resident in Knollwood didn't want chickens at their neighbor's yard, and Knollwood had something in their covenant that said, "We don't allow chickens in our neighborhood," then that would be something that would be on our permit process, checking in with those neighborhoods if they have something stated in that.
Okay, so if it's not in our covenants now, we could still put that in the covenants?
That'd be a great idea.
Would you?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I guess, Jenny, I'd like to take exception to one comment that you made. You said there were several meetings, I think there were more than seven.
I would agree on that.
That said, we'll now open a public hearing on bill number thirty-two seventeen. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Make sure that they sign in and keep the clipboard at the podium.
Okay, please sign in. And if you please keep the clipboard at the podium, so to make sure everyone gets a chance to sign in. Thank you very much.
I think it's three minutes.
Please state your name and address.
My name is...
For the council, and you have three minutes to your address.
Okay, my name is Erin Donaldson. My address is two-five-seven-five-one Kern Road, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-four. I support and encourage the council to vote in support of the county chicken part of the new animal ordinance that is proposed. I will talk about some chicken benefits that I know of, but in reading the ordinance specifically related to chickens, I think maybe it doesn't go far enough. It's still placing limitations on owners in the county, similar to if they lived in the city, or even more so. So while it is a living document, I hope that changes continue to happen and discussion continues to happen as we go further. Some benefits to having chickens, the fresh eggs from your backyard flock are definitely more healthy and better tasting than store-bought, and they're organic, hormone, and antibiotic-free. Chickens provide a natural pest control in yards and gardens, which eliminates a lot of use of chemicals and pesticides. They also reduce waste by redirecting kitchen scraps from the landfill, because the chickens will eat those. Having chickens in your yard or in your neighborhood teaches children where the food comes from. My daughters were able to see chickens hatched from eggs. They were able to go out each day and get those eggs that we could cook up for breakfast. It fosters sustainability in the community, and it puts San Jo County more in line with progressive communities across the nation. There's nothing better than being in your garden with chickens pecking the earth nearby, scrambling for a worm or grub, and all running to you when you call to the flock. They're just not farm animals to produce a product. They become family pets with personalities, quirks, and antics that are amazing to watch. The modification or the changing of this ordinance is a great stepping stone to allowing families and members of San Jo County community to move forward towards self-sustainability, producing their own food, and taking pride in working to make the world a better place, especially San Jo County. I do want to reiterate that it is a living document. I think it has room for improvement further. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, council. My name is Bill Sykes. I live at one-eighty-nine-two-seven Darden Road in South Bend. Sign in real quick. I was able to serve on the rewrite work group, and it was a privilege and a learning experience as well. And it was headed up by your president, Raphael Morton. He led us and kept everybody, kind of like when things got tense, he always came up with some good jokes, or, you know, he has a great sense of humor. And thank you, Raphael, for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see if I can... Okay. So, but I also want to thank code enforcement and the zoning board and area plan in helping to define acreage requirements, square footage, setbacks for beehives, chicken coops, and on up to livestock, horses, and cattle. You know, without them, you know, this would not go anywhere, because nothing, you know, And I got to mention Jean Praywai, too. Without her keeping us informed of, you know, time changes, and she got us copies and everything on time, and she really pushed the process forward, too. That's enough, Lord, I'm going to guys, now I'll get down to some business here. In my mind, the most sought-after and important aspect of this rewrite is the lifting of the domestic pet limit. And that means, right now, a person who has the current limit of four pets is not allowed to adopt anymore from any shelter or the Humane Society. And what that does, it just prohibits that animal from going home. And it also keeps that animal in that space, so you have intakes coming in, if that shelter is full, they've got nowhere to go. So I really support the pet limit that has been written in here, I mean, the lifting of the pet limit that has been written in here. We follow, we tried to follow South Bend's lead as much as we could, and especially, you know, they've incorporated, they've lifted the pet limit, and they're doing very well at it. They have the highest rate of adoptions that they've ever seen in years, you know, by allowing people to adopt, even if they have three or four or five animals, if they're proven to be responsible pet owners, they're allowed to have as many pets as they can have. And, you know, and, well, Jenny did mention the requirements or the standard care of animals. And basically, it's a no-brainer. It's just good food, loving, shelter, don't have them tethered outside, make them a part of your family. And if you can do that with as many animals as you can, then it should be allowed. This revision is not perfect, but to continue to try to iron out contentious aspects will delay the passing of this by months, keeping animals from enjoying the comforts of a loving home. Raphael stated this publicly, that this is a living, breathing document and can be revisited at any time for additions and revisions. Counsel, I would ask that you give a, you know, hands-up approval or thumbs-up for this newly revised ordinance.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure I asked you to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation, also.
Good evening. My name is Adam Parsons. I live at one-four-six-zero-three Brick Road. I'm a recent transplant to San Joseph County, moving up here from Hamilton County, currently drawing with my daughter Sophia the First Marker, as she has her only ballpoint pen. So anyways, I wanted to voice my opinion in favor for this bill. Like I said, a recent transplant from Fishers, actually. My wife and I moved up there just recently, a couple of years back. We were disappointed to know that they did not have an ordinance of this type, yet neighboring Carmel and Noblesville did. Westfield was actually looking at approval. And I know that a lot of my coworkers in the thirty-five-plus-or-minus range, later millennials, younger Gen Xers, they actually focus on this type of thing when finding a place to live. These are lifelong citizens that will have higher incomes and steady incomes and steady tax basis, and I think this is a great move forward to take, move San Joseph County that has the South Bend Rust Belt moniker across the Midwest, moving it forward into the twenty-first century. Additionally, the benefits of chickens has already been stated several times, but I'd add that it adds to the decentralization of our food source. I know I eat at least two to three eggs a day, and six chickens might keep up with that. But also, I wanted to touch on honeybees as well. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with colony collapse disorder and the disaster that has been befallen the honeybee, the native North American honeybee, European honeybee in the last recent years, but up to fifty to sixty percent of our honeybees are now dead within the past ten, fifteen years. Keeping a single honeybee per every five houses, ten houses, fifteen houses could help repopulate the honeybees that eighty to eighty-five percent of our food production is dependent upon. One honeybee, you keep it for one year, in the springtime, they swarm, they form another colony. And that, two years from then, you have two swarms that form two more colonies, and it's an exponential growth that they're not near industrialized agriculture that uses the pesticides and herbicides that are so frequently found in our monocropping cultures, and therefore they're not exposed to that, and they can create, they can build the resistance that the industrialized honeybees don't have. Anyways, in summary, I wholly support this ordinance, and I hope we can pass it. Thank you.
Sir, just one comment. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny, but we did not get that in-depth and have the expertise that you just explained to us as far as honeybees, but I do think we get on the honeybees and honeybee one-on-one?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruth Ciarto, and I live at three-two-seven-six-six Early Road in New Carlyle. I was a member of the work group, and it's been kind of a long struggle, but I totally support what's in the proposed changes to the ordinance. I thank the council members for your willingness to visit this issue, as well as your willingness to revisit the issue in the future. I've heard several people talk about this being a living, breathing document, and I do know that there are some areas where we still have some concerns, but we totally, I totally support the current, the ordinance that's being proposed. I want to thank Jenny for all of your hard work on this. I think you, as much as anybody, if not more, put in a lot of hours on this, and I'm sure, Mr. Morton, that this also tied up your time, as well as Ms. Hess and Mr. Krzyszynski. So in spite of our contentious conversations at times, I do appreciate that you're willing to look at these animal issues, and I hope that, you know, you have talked about revisiting this in another six months, and I'm already having people contact me about issues that they want to include when we revisit this, so I do have plans to do that. Again, I thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Sadie Oldencamp. I live at nine-ten East Donald Street, South Bend, Indiana, zip code four-six-six-one-three. Though I myself don't plan to do beekeeping or do chicken coops, I fully support this ordinance. I myself am a big love of gardener. I'm actually a first-time homeowner this year myself, so one of the first thing I wanted to do was, as soon as it stops snowing, was put some seeds into the ground. So of course, I myself would benefit from this greatly, because if there's more bees and more honeybees populating, I'm more likely to get a pretty good crop, wanting to sustain my household with good and healthy food. Not to mention a lot of the traditions of gardening that's been given to me by my mother and her mother before her, I get to now pass down to my generation as well. And I could definitely see how a lot of these families were learning to be sustainable and local, and being able to do beekeeping and raising chickens or other animals. It's a good family tradition, it's good for the community, and gives me the chance to buy a lot more local and put my money back into the community I'd like to live in and invest. I hope the council considers this as favorably as I do, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Lois Myers, two-three-seven-five-oh Madison Road, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-four. I was on the rewrite committee also, and after hitting a lot of bumps, I think we got some smooth sailing, and we're all on the same page, and I think the ordinance is pretty good. There are several places in the ordinance where it's either redundant or not completely clear, but like Raphael says, it's a living document, we can go over it, we can figure out what's going to work and what's not going to work. And I think it's basically a good ordinance. It's going to improve the lives of the people in the county, and also the animals at the shelter will have a chance to get adopted, because there's good homes waiting that already have the limit. So I think we should pass this, and I want to thank all the council members for their time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi there. My name's Chris Janowski. I live at five-three-seven-nine-five Quince Road, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-two-eight. About two years ago, you approved a variance for me for chickens. I don't know if you remember or not. You that live in Knollwood, you're missing out on fresh eggs, because my neighbors love all the eggs that I give them. So since I had the chickens, I've had zero problems with any neighbors, no problems with the chickens crossing the road. I think one of you might have asked me that question. No problem with any kind of smell. I think we have a fireman that's going to talk about heat lamps. I was eavesdropping. I don't use heat lamps, I don't believe in heat lamps. Chickens actually don't need heat in the winter. We had no safety issues. It's gone perfectly. I mean, I can't tell you how great it is. My nieces and nephews come over and they run around, they play with the chickens. They all have personalities, that's been talked about. There's some zen in sitting in your garden and watching chickens peck, and at first I wasn't really sure what the whole chicken thing was all about, because they're chickens. But I wanted it, I wanted to get them, and I wanted to start out small, but then you sit out there and you watch them, and they're pecking, and they're talking, and they're scratching, and they're chasing things, and next thing you know, you've been sitting outside for an hour watching your chickens, and they become pets, and they have names, and they actually do come when they're called, which, maybe it's just your voice and they think you have something for them. I don't know. But there is, they are pets. There's a website, My Pet Chicken. I mean, this is not, I know they're considered farm animals, but there is this movement about farm animals becoming pets, and it's even listed in the ordinance under domestic animals, not farm animals. So this is, this is a trend. People want to know where their food comes from. I have a friend that bought pigs because he wanted to know that the pigs were antibiotic-free, did slaughter them, I don't agree with that, but anyway. People want to know about their food. That's where we're heading. The eggs that I give to my friends say they're the best eggs they've ever had. People are willing to spend more money for organic eggs. That's what they want. This is where we're headed, and you're not, I don't believe you're going to have the kinds of problems, I mean, I'm not sure why this is such a big issue. If you have, I mean, people move out into the county and have land because they want to be able to do these kinds of things. So I don't understand why in the city, on a small lot, you can have six chickens, and why here we are. I mean, this was several years ago that I got this variance. You know, I have three and a half acres. Chickens don't need a whole lot of space, so I'm not sure, but regardless, I mean, this is the right direction to be in. And so I just want you to know that it was a good thing to approve the variance, I think this is a good way to go. I could go on about pet limits and everything else, but I just want you to know that this was a success story, and I think this is the right way to go, and I don't think you'll have the kinds of problems that maybe people anticipate that you'll have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Here's a, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I had Jennifer forward you some of my concerns. Hopefully you got to see some. Oh, my name's Duke Hasom, four-two-two Kennedy Drive, South Bend, four-six-six-one-four. I'm a little nervous, sorry. Forgot. nervous, sorry. Forgot. So, obviously, there's a little more to it. I went line by line, so it would be easy to see some of the things I thought could be changed. Some of the key things are, I think there's some confliction with some of the state laws. So, for example, the hot car law just passed in Indiana, so I think that the county ordinance should match the state law, so it's not conflicting. There's also fourteen days versus three days, because dogs are considered property. And in some parts of the ordinance, it talks about three days. I'd also like to see, some of the more compassionate parts in the ordinance include something about the migratory fowls, the geese that were a big issue that happened in the parks. I'd also like to see a walkthrough on the weekends for people who have lost a pet, to have the opportunity during the weekend to see them. I'd like to see that there's a limit on the length of time a muzzle can be placed on a dog, the banning of prong collars. And in terms of service animals, I think there needs to be some special notice in there about people with PTSD. As service animals, I know some veterans that have animals for their PTSD, and there was a case where one of those animals was put down in the shelter. It was before Jenny's time. But I wanted to recognize that veterans are very dependent on those animals. There's some details. For example, I was a person, I was a citizen that spoke up for bees with City of South Bend. I noticed in the ordinance, it still says "city" and not "county." So, there's details like that. There's, and in ORB, which legally can make a difference. In the property, I'd like to see searching of storage units. Unfortunately, people are leaving pets in storage units, locking them and walking away. So, the search of a storage unit. It doesn't address mass rescues, like when there's a Katrina or a tornado event. In the vaccination area, it doesn't account for titers, which mean that if the animal still shows that a vaccine is active, they don't need to be vaccinated again. The term keeper, to me, is like finder's keepers. I prefer that it say temporary garden. I appreciate you looking at this and considering some of these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just, I guess out of curiosity, Jenny, would you have any comments to some of those concerns? I thought some of those were addressed, and obviously, we can...
I think some of those were addressed in some of the meetings that we had, and I think some of the issues that she did bring up in the paperwork that was passed out, the six pages of corrections she had, some of those things that we already do here at our shelter, and some of them are different state laws. The last thing she talked, one of the last things she spoke about was rabies titers. The state of Indiana doesn't recognize titers in the form of vaccines. They just recognize that you had a rabies vaccination done. So, all of our rabies control is based upon the state's rabies laws. That's in our ordinance. We took it straight from the state. So, there are definitely some good points in there that I think we can definitely look at for our next round, but I think some of it is just misinformation that she may not know that we already do.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the bill?
Good evening. My name's Lynn Cockman. I live at 16680 Brick Road. That's between Grape and Hickory. And I'm not necessarily speaking against the bill. What I'm talking about is, I'm an enthusiastic and devoted pet owner myself. Anyone that lives in the Georgian Acres subdivision have seen my wife and I walking our miniature schnauzers on a double leash. Sometimes I feel like I'm water skiing, because I'm hanging on to that triangle leash with a poop bag at the side, multiple times a day during the summer, and at least once a day the rest of the year. I've already sent, and there's no need to go over this further, I emailed the county council based on the fact that I was not able to speak at the zoning board meeting on May 3rd. But as far as, the only concern I really have, and I also want to note that I am all in favor of responsible pet ownership. The folks that have spoken for, it sounds like they've got it together, and they're responsible pet owners, be it chickens, dogs, et cetera. In our case, we make sure our pets are, the shots are always up to date. And like I said, when they're outside, they're with us on a leash all the time, because their miniature schnauzers are terriers, they're part of the terrier group. If they see a bird or a chipmunk, they're gone, no matter how well you train them. But I do have a question or concern with is, first of all, in saying, I like our neighbors. I think they're really neat. I just wish that they had been more neighborly in asking us, what did we think? For instance, my son and I race a car at Plymouth Speedway on the weekends. The engine is never turned on in our garage or out in our driveway during the week in preparation for a race. The rare time the engine would come back from a builder, and we need to warm it up for about ten minutes, what I do is, I talk with all the other neighbors in the surrounding area and say, between eleven o'clock in the morning and noon on this day, it's going to be about ten minutes, and that's it. Just so that they know what's going on, and we're not just whittling, making noise for the sake of making noise. More specific, it states that no more than six chickens per single-family property, our neighbors, the Treywicks at Avonale, there were at least a dozen. Only female chickens will be allowed. Roosters are specifically prohibited. What was frustrating was the crowing of roosters from Labor Day all the way through Easter, starting at about 3:30, four o'clock in the morning. Obviously, our dogs will wake up, they start growling, they start barking, and then the other neighbor's dogs will start barking. Made for a long school day. Let's see, going down, "Coops shall be kept clean, dry, and odor-free." Well, that wasn't necessarily the case until just recently. "Chicken coops shall be located at least twenty feet from the nearest residential structure." I'm not sure what that is, what that defines, whether it's our house, their house, storage shed, or what have you. As far as a setback is concerned, right now, the setback is at zero feet, zero inches. And I just wanted to say, at least I had a chance to state my case, and still in favor of pets that are taken care of responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny, any comments on some of those concerns? Don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
Oh, yeah, no. I think anybody owning a chicken, or a cow, or a pig, or anything that we may have moving into the smaller properties versus what we have now, will still be held to high standards. So, we still encourage any member of the public who does have a problem or an issue with their neighbors not caring for their pets properly, or that are becoming a public nuisance to their area neighbors, to still give us a call, so that we can mediate those issues.
That's really why I wanted you to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Because you're saying that one of your neighbors has roosters?
They have.
Yeah.
The Humane Society has gone out. We tried to be a good neighbor and just kind of play along, and it just got frustrating.
Right. And I mean, our whole goal was, like we were saying, to be synonymous as possible with the city's ordinance. And from the beginning, I found it kind of fascinating that you have to have five acres to have...
You have five acres to have chickens and ten acres to have dogs, so...
And you could have chickens in the city in your backyard.
Exactly.
That does not make sense.
But it's all, it comes down to being a good neighbor, and being a responsible pet owner, and that's what we're trying to do with this ordinance.
And I'm just saying, sir, we do have restrictions, no roosters and setbacks, and, you know, so please contact the Humane Society, because they are our enforcement arm of the ordinance.
The frustrating part is, I think our neighbors are really needed. It's just frustrating.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, he mentioned there's zero setbacks for chickens. Is that correct?
In the part of the animal control ordinance, I believe the other setbacks are set in the zoning portion of the ordinance. Yeah.
And Angela did contact me today, said she, they could not be here today, but we are working with Angela and Area Plan to...
Yes. The thing that's a little difficult for this portion of the ordinance and the number of domestic animals that can stay at home, the dogs and the cats, is that we're working with two ordinances, not just the animal control ordinance, but also the zoning ordinances. So, part of it's in ours, and part of it's in theirs. So, once we get both of them on the same page and approved, then we can make a document at the shelter that has ours and theirs together to give to these pet owners, to let them know what's expected from them, not just from the animal shelter, but also from zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Ms. Nolan?
I'd like to make a comment, but that's exactly what she told us at committee, is that if this were passed, then they could change the zoning ordinance appropriately. But if this doesn't pass, then no point changing the zoning ordinance. So, how this comes out tonight, I expect within the next two months, the zoning ordinances will come here and get taken care of.
Correct.
Plus, I need to get it. She says...
So, hopefully, next month.
There you go, next month.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Here we now have a total public hearing on Bill 3217. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Morton? Mr. Tansrake?
I would like to make an amendment to Bill 3217. I'd like to amend that Section 90-14, Section E, and change the word "city" to "county."
What page is that on?
I think 23. 21. Let me verify. 21, 23. 21. Very bottom of the page. Compliance required penalties. I presume for the framers of this, it is intended for it to say county and not city, as was brought up, which was from Ms. Kasum.
Yes.
Under the honeybee.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mark. Could you say that again?
My motion is to amend 90.14, Section E as an edward, for the word "city" to be stricken and replace it with the word "county" in that sentence regarding beekeeping.
Your second to that motion to amend, probably Bill 3217 on the table? I oppose. You guys have it. Do I hear a motion to pass Bill number 3217 as amended?
Over approval. Second?
Motion to pass Bill number 3217, presented by Councilor Nolan, and presented by Councilor Lynn Hess. Any further comments on 3217?
Please.
As amended?
Mr. President?
Mr. McKeough?
I'd just like to thank, as I already told, the rewrite committee or the committee. Thank for probably the sixteen-plus months that everybody in this room, including yourself, have put into this ordinance. I think it's very thoughtful. And by saying that it's a living, breathing document is more than adequate. It could be a problem in the future. With zoning, it could be a problem. But like you said, it's a living and breathing document. I'd like to thank everybody for the recognition.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Ms. Krasinski?
I also too would like to thank you and also Councilor Lynn Hess for putting this committee together. And also, we have a silent member back there in the back of the room that attended mostly all the meetings, Melody. Will you please stand up and just be recognized, Melody? Because you are very instrumental with Ruth and Lois in regards to attending all the meetings, and very instrumental in supporting the ordinance and getting this in the right track, along with Ruth and Lois. And Jenny, thank you for all your hard work. I know all of us in Bill back there, we all put a lot of time into this, and all the efforts came out to hopefully be pretty positive here. So, thank you all. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Krasinski. Any further comments? Ms. Hess?
I guess I would also like to thank everyone as well. It was a pleasure working with the group despite some contentious moments. I think we all learned a lot about animals and what's going on in the county that we didn't really, some of us, understand. So, it was a great experience, and I think it's a great way to make ordinance this afternoon in the county. Thank you.
Yeah, the comments from council? I'd just like to also echo those comments and thank everyone that was involved. This has been a major undertaking, and that's the understatement of the year. Very time-consuming, but it's very well worth it. And everyone worked very hard and was very dedicated. And Jenny, you've just gone above and beyond anything we could ask. And I want to say thank you very much. And everyone, the animal enthusiasts, the Facebook groups, everyone involved, my fellow colleagues on the council, just, I can't thank you enough. So, with that said, could we please take the roll? Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Tansrake?
Yes.
Mr. McKeough?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton? No, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah. Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you. Looking back at Bill number 3217, it's passed by Bill number ninety-one. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Next on the agenda is new business. Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes on items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Rafael, there is new business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. We were going to talk about changing the order. Mr. Nolan, having land use first on the agenda, is that correct?
Yes. Actually, I thought I was just speaking with Rules Committee. I mean, we can certainly talk about it here, kind of what we did tonight, getting the land use, the public, and the government.
I would consider that being rules, but it's more for visitors in and out, I mean, what time is that?
That's a very, extremely extensive. Any problems remain, Councilor, on that change?
Well, I would like to see both of you as working on the same reasons, and we're going to work with these reasons that proceeds to make this happen. And I would like to share my opinion.
My only reason why I think that is that our department has done some stuff, so it's coming here at night time, and I need to ask them if you may be contentious on any issues you'd like to make. And I like, I do, Diana, I want to thank you, but at least the one item that was supposed to go, you do have a moment to listen.
Everything is the same.
So, Mr. Triple, is that a Rules Committee, or can we vote on that?
I would have a voice vote.
Okay, voice vote. Any favor?
Aye.
Both. We'll make that change, moving forward. We're going to the floor, limited to three minutes.
Oh, no, I was, I was going to go to the floor. That's an item that's not on the agenda tonight. I wanted to make an observation about the spillage pickup. I noticed, as ladies this afternoon, there's still a lot of piles of bees in around Ranjo that have not been picked up. I understand that homeowners who are supposed to call, put a spray pickup. I think that's a rigorous requirement to expect people to call or do something online to get the bees picked up. I'm particularly disappointed with that level of service.
Now, those concerns have been expressed to...
I've passed them out to Justice, I can pass, like the food chain. And it's not Justice's fault, I think.
No, okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right. Mr. Nolan?
Do you think that that's the same, I feel the same way about regularly picking up a bee or a bee in a part of county outside of bike lanes, and having somebody pick up that?
I see this as different, that it's supplemental, you pick up the folks in the subdivision, there's no way that my neighbors knew that they had called. In fact, when we met, you told me that. In fact, when we, when we met, you told them that...
I agree about the application, yes, I just wanted to clarify, you thought that was a case law?
Thank you for that clarification.
Anything else, Diana, lady? And motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, please adjourn.
Yes, so the, the president's actually been the zoning ordinance and now it's the control. So the zoning is going to change out, part of it is under their kind of factory definition, it says...
I go, well, it's a good thing, I guess, but we really didn't want to tax us about $8,000.
Who are you selling?
Are you waiting on me though?
With my...
I'm sorry.
In all honesty?
Now they got a bill, unfortunately.
What I know now?
You need to find out retroactive. The new bill is effective July 1st, I don't know if you go back to...
What I know now?
You miss out on your drop due to disability pension, you pension off?
See, I did, because I was old enough to retire, so they gave me my retirement date. Although the other option is, Wackowski takes time off because he's got stage four, car gets... You can tell me I couldn't have gone on unpaid family medical...
How you should, how you should...
It wasn't an option, I was told that, you know, already called, state earth.
You could have gone on FM, unpaid, our people do it, our guys do it.
I'm unpaid now, this is my paid job.
You could have paid, you could have paid in your pension. Take your pension, earn nothing for it either.
I have the money.
Huh?
I have the money.
You could have made your pension payers.
I know.
You get something, man, I took one before, your pensions are very sucks. They didn't keep you on the floor.
There's, there's other guys that... Taking about retirement, basically he does 100%. By the way, I sent you an email. I had to send it back four times. I did, just, just do it online. I go...
I don't know, brother, I know you...